Mayor, we are recording. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you and welcome to the council and guests and those who are online with us. I understand we have about forty-five people joining us as constituents or interested parties. As we begin, I first need to read a determination by me as the Chair of the City Council concerning an anchor location, and I'll read that now for the public record. It states, pursuant to Utah Code annotated fifty-two dash four dash two oh seven four, the city's mayor, as the Chair of the City Council hereby determines that conducting the meeting of the City Council on this date at an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. Is well-recognized that a global pandemic currently exists relating to the COVID-19 coronavirus, which has potential to overwhelm Utah's healthcare systems. Therefore, due to state emergency caused by the global pandemic, I find that conducting a meeting at an anchor location under the current state of public health emergency constitutes a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the location. Therefore, we are online and again, welcome everyone. We'll now begin by following our agenda with a pledge of allegiance. And I would ask Councilmember Bruce, would you be so kind to lead us in that pledge?
Happy soon. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Bruce. Tonight on our agenda, we have two opportunities for public comments. The first is citizen comments. Then if you want to comment regarding the Trails Access Plan, we'll be taking public comment on that after we do our general citizen comments. Now, in the past few meetings, sometimes we've had large amounts of people, so we've reduced time to two minutes. But tonight, we feel that we can get everybody on, so we will be allowing three minutes for individuals. Or if you represent a group and you declare that at the beginning, you could have five minutes. But also, I want to emphasize that please let us know if you're a city resident or not. That won't prohibit you from speaking, but we'd like to know if you're a constituent. Also, there's a statement that's included in the agenda, which I think is important. And I'm just going to read it because I think it's well-stated. Talks about civility and it states civility and decorum should be applied in all discussions and debate. Difficult questions, tough challenges to a point of view and criticism of ideas and information are legitimate elements of a free democracy in action. Public officials and the public are encouraged to refrain from making belligerent, personal, impertinent, slanderous, threatening, abusive, or disparaging comments. So we appreciate everybody's sensitivity to that. We want to hear from everyone. That's the great thing about America is that everyone can have an opinion and they have the right to share that. So with that being said, one last housing thing. If you're looking on a screen, you'll see our city manager who will raise his hand when the three minutes is up or your time is up. So look at that. If not, I'll try to carefully remind you of your time. Paula, who would like to speak first?
I have Nicole Belk.
Welcome, Nicole.
Hi, thank you. And I'm representing a group.
Okay.
I'm Nicole Belk, a citizen of District Three, who was verbally and profanely accosted by the rioters while walking with my teenage daughter through my neighborhood on August second. While I'm speaking for hundreds of people this evening, believe me when I say this issue is quite personal. There is a small percentage of Cottonwood Heights citizens with criminal intent, including some from outside our city who have interactions with CHPD that are naturally going to be negative. In contrast, most residents of our city are law-abiding people whose rare interactions within the Cottonwood Heights Police Department are positive. We believe the majority of Cottonwood Heights citizens respect and deeply appreciate our police and service to our families and community. Services such as the day in 2017, when an elderly woman with dementia walked out of her daughter's home in Cottonwood Heights in the dead of winter. The family could not find her and called 911. CHPD was dispatched, they investigated, learned she had taken the bus downtown by scanning through UTAs on bus videos and quickly located her. The CHPD officers sent to get her were friendly and kind with her, got her a warm blanket while in the patrol car, sang church hymns with her to help her feel safe, and even bought some lunch for her on their way back to her daughter's house. A wonderful example of the quality of service our police department gives us. But it didn't stop there. Out of personal funds, one of the police officers purchased a GPS locator for people with dementia and gifted it to her family so the problem wouldn't reoccur. This is service above and beyond. This summer, we have had four anti-police protests at City Hall. While these have been peaceful, they have also included non-residents, including from out of state, coming to our city to tell us how we are to live. In this case, telling us who to employ as our police chief and telling us to live with reduced resources. People from outside our city don't get a say in how we run our city and Councilperson Bruce should know and support that. Then we had a fifth anti-police protest, again with outside agitators, that turned into a riot with our police being attacked, their body cameras and keys stolen, residential properties being trespassed, local citizens being prevented from coming and going, as well as having their peace taken as thugs with bullhorns walk down their streets shouting obscenities. District Three residents felt genuine emotional pain at what transpired. Councilperson Bruce has actively participated in each of these anti-police protests with outside agitators and in the August second riot, supporting the rioters as they disrupted the lives and peace of her very own District Three constituents. What responsible councilperson would ever do that? We believe in each case, she had, as presumably a person with leadership skills, the power to stop these outside agitators from coming here at all and certainly fell short of her oath of office in supporting them when they did come. The full text of grievances against Councilperson Bruce are on page ten herein. In summary, they are: one, disregard for municipal government process and failure tact according to code; two, failure to recognize her duty to represent her constituents; three, behavior unbecoming of an elected official; four, no longer being a credible broker for change or a competent representative of District Three; five, obstruction of city business; and six, creating a hostile attitude towards Cottonwood Heights police. Natalie Bruce may be a good neighbor and friend. She may believe she is doing the right thing in her actions. Natalie Bruce, the person is not the issue. Our complaint against Councilperson Bruce is in her conduct as an elected official of our city. It is her choices in the office she was elected to, which have fallen short of the professional and Cottonwood Heights-minded conduct we expect from our elected representatives and to which she, like all on this council, has taken an oath to perform. Unlike the rest of you on the council, Councilperson Bruce has allowed her personal agenda to cause her disregard that oath of office. Now, what do we expect to happen? We now ask Councilperson Bruce to do the right thing and resign from the City Council. Should she elect not to resign, we ask the remaining Cottonwood Heights city leaders to consider her voice on city matters to be self-serving and not representative of her voting constituency. Consider this a vote of no confidence in her as a supposed city leader. Sincerely, 2,047 Cottonwood Heights citizens and business owners, including almost as many from her own District Three, as voted her into office to begin with. This number includes an estimated thirty-two Cottonwood Heights business owners who reside out of our city boundaries and an additional one-hundred-eighty-seven Cottonwood Heights business owners who also reside within our boundaries. The online petition will remain open, so these numbers will likely increase.
Nicole, your time is up. Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate it.
I'm almost done. I just have one sentence. Is that okay?
Go right ahead.
We are unaware of any citizen-driven petition to remove an elected official in Utah to have garnered as many signatures as this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. All right, Paula, who's next?
I have Tiffany James.
Tiffany, you're up.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Tiffany James and I'm a Cottonwood Heights resident. I appreciate you all listening to my comment tonight. And that's really what I want to talk about is the importance of both listening and taking action. You know, I happened to be sent an article, a colleague, that was in the Deseret News last week. The article was an interview about you, Mr. Mayor, and how you believe that aggressive listening is the key to finding a way to action. In this article, you also talked about how you have to listen all sides. And I want to say, I really truly wish I could be among that small group of supporters that left their comments saying that you had wise methods to leadership and lauded you for your statements, but I can't be. I can't be because your characterization of the leadership methods you follow are 100% true in one sense and then they're 100% false in another. Yes, it's true, you are a listener, but you really only listen to those that you want to. And so do the other city leaders that are sitting up there with you outside of a couple that we've had an opportunity to interact with. You know, we've learned all too well that this perception or this characterization I'm giving is true. Since our son, Zane James, was shot by Officer Davies of the Cottonwood Heights Police Department, a police department and a police chief that your city manager, Tim Ting, who he directly reports to, this department of police chief, publicly admits that he doesn't require the department to have an established process for collecting public statements when an incident occurs or for responding to citizens' public comments when they take the time to make them during open meetings such as these. How is that consistent with this idea that you represent or characterization that you're listening to both sides? It's really unfortunate. It's also since this horrible tragedy that our family has suffered, the loss of our son after an addiction that resulted from a sports injury. And many of you sitting on the council and many of you on our neighborhood, we have had a huge level of support from our neighbors, have experienced this with their own children or even with their own spouses or family. Since this, we've listened very intently at what you do and say, as well as that of the other city leaders. And sadly, we've all watched you do nothing more than just listen. And the problem with this is when your leader listens, it's only half of the real purpose in having a leadership role. The second and most meaningful aspect of being leader is taking action. So we listen to you and Tim Ting and give your condolences to us and lament the tragedy of our son's death when we met with you shortly afterwards. And we asked for policy changes related to a non-mandatory camera policy that Cottonwood Heights has. And that is what has led to the ambiguity of Officer Davies' rationale for choosing to shoot our son in the back at a distance of less than thirty feet with no warning while he was off duty rather than having, you know, using a taser, you know, or tackling an injured teenager. We've listened to how you've stayed silent when a former mayor, police chief, and other citizens, like the woman before us, vilify Councilwoman Tally Bruce, who's supposed to be your colleague. A lot of the things that people are saying are absolute falsehoods. Everything they're saying is absolute falsehoods. The protest organized by-
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Your time is up. Thank you.
Oh, I just have a couple more statements like Ms. Belk. Can I finish?
Go right ahead, but again-
Thank you so much. So what we'd like to hear and what we'd like to see tonight is for you not just to listen, but to take action. We've asked you guys to drop all the charges against the protesters, not just those three that were filed by the DA, but the others five that were quietly charged in Holiday Court last week without any public comment or notice after the DA declined. We'd like you to suspend Police Chief Russo and the other officers who used force. We would like you to conduct an outside investigation that does not involve an organization in the state of Utah. And we have a petition of over 5,000 people. And many of those are Cottonwood Heights residents.
All right, Tiffany, thank you very much. Who's next?
I have Mike Hanson.
Go ahead, Mike. Mr. Hanson, you're answered.
He's still on mute, Mayor.
Yeah. Paula, you want to go next person? Come back to Mike.
Yes, I have Kristen Miklos.
Go ahead, Kristen.
Hi, I'm a resident of Cottonwood Heights. I hope you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Great. The Cottonwood Heights Police have had to do their job in the face of criticism and contempt by those who should be supporting them. So I just want to take this moment to thank them for continuing to serve us under these difficult circumstances. In particular, thanks to Officer Griffiths and Officer Comber, who separately responded to some minor issues in my neighborhood recently. They each came quickly. They handled it with professionalism and kindness. I'm also delighted to see Riley Pilgrim here tonight. I don't know if Riley remembers me, but I invited him to come and do a presentation for a community event several years ago about fire safety in our neighborhoods. He graciously came and everybody loved his presentation. So thank you for that, Riley. I want to apologize to these officers and to all of them for the lack of appreciation that I know they're feeling as a result of the actions of a City Councilperson who's created an environment of hostility towards them. I also want to acknowledge and thank the mayor and the other members of the City Council for their service. And I want them to know that we know that their job has become more onerous because of these unnecessary distractions. Please don't be discouraged or give up the fight because we need you now more than ever. And please know, as you go forward, that Councilperson Bruce does not have the support of the majority of her district. They do not feel represented and it should be her job to represent all, not just the very vocal few of her choice. So thanks to the organizers of the petition because it has given me a vehicle to express my displeasure. And apparently, it has for over 2,000 others as well. And thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Appreciate your comments. Paula, who's next?
Mayor, I have Timothy Albeck.
Tim, welcome. Tim is also on mute. We can hear you now. Start over.
Cool. Thumbs up. Are we good?
Go ahead.
Okay, cool. I'm going to turn my speakers down because we've got a really weird reverb or something like going on there. Okay, how's that? Okay, there you go. So I got a couple of things, kind of similar to what some of the other people were talking about. You know, it's, we have a, it's trouble reconciling what's going on in society today. I mean, on the one hand, we got Elon Musk and SpaceX, once again, supplying the space station. They're putting up a rocket every ten days now. We're this close to, you know, getting onto the, one of the polar moon things. And yet, here on Earth, we're back saying, we have a local protest. We've got people doing graffiti. We've got marches against 260-year-old institutions like, I don't know, voting in person, the rule of law, law enforcement being the people that enforce the laws. So it just seems a little crazy to me. And I'm not the first guy, because there was a guy named Charles back in 1859, who wrote a really long book about it. And I am going to use my time to recite a couple of lines from that. "It was the best of times. It was the worst of times. It was the age of wisdom. It was the age of foolishness. It was the epoch of belief. It was the epoch of incredulity. It was a season of lights. It was a season of darkness." Now, he was, of course, reflecting all the stuff that was going on during the French Revolution in Paris, but the things going on in London. But if you think about it, that's really not that different from what we have going on in Portland and what we have going in very peaceful places like here, Austin and some other places. Austin and some other places. So anyway, that book is about 160 years old. If you haven't read it in a while, I would suggest it. Speaking of being old, I'm not saying that the mayor is old. You know it was coming, right?
Yeah.
He walked into an antique store the other day and two people bit on him. So he asked the lady, "What's my birthstone?" And she said, "Lava." There you go. All right. On city business, a big thank you to Mike Johnson and his group for all the planning, to Matt and his crews for the implementation, and to Tim Tingey and for his oversight and management of the recent slurry and striping and bicycle lanes and pedestrian crossings and all the other things that you have to do. As you know, each of those segments, there's 100 different things you have to do exactly right. And if you get even just one of them wrong, it's, "Oh, the world's on fire. The world's on fire." But those guys were doing a great job and I just wanted to acknowledge that from management all the way down to the guys doing the actual work, the slurry work, it's looking fantastic. And finally, in remembrance of 9/11, I would just say two words. Let's roll. Thank you.
Tim, thank you. Appreciate your comments. Paula, who's next?
Mayor, we're going to try Mike Hanson again.
Mr. Hanson, welcome back. Go ahead, Mike. Mike, can you hear us? Paul, I think we're going to have to try bringing back again. We're not hearing anything.
Okay, John Hammond.
Mr. Hammond, welcome.
Can you hear me okay, Mayor?
We can hear you.
Okay. First of all, I want to just to point a note. I don't think personally, we should have people that are outside of our city signing anything, any petition, or even on these meetings. I think it's a joke. If you live in the city, great. You have a, you've got some skin in the game, but other than that, no. That's my opinion. Also, I've lived here in Cottonwood Heights since the inception and I watched Kelvin Colmore, Mike Peterson, Chief Russo and all these guys. And I've watched them. I don't know them personally, but I've had interactions with them and their actions are what count and matter. And I have, they have done a very good job. And I just want to say, Mayor, Chief Russo, all of you guys that work hard and try to do the right thing all the time, thank you very much. The other thing is, I'd like to say that the actions are the most important thing when it comes to our leaders. And watching Tally Bruce out there, and I was out there on that street. I watched the entire thing and her actions were despicable and disgusting. And the fact that I have a leader in my City Council that would behave like that is absolutely disgusting to me. And I am, I just am at wit's end watching her. And I watched her live. I didn't see the, I watched her video afterwards, but I watched everything live and I saw her fain like she had got hit in the neck and I saw her inciting everything that went on. And it was deplorable to no end. The other thing that I watched that was so sad was the police as they left, as they were leaving the event that happened. And the looks on their face were looks of total, just loss. Loss of how on earth are they being treated like this? Just my kids were sad, every single one of them that walked by. My kids waved at him and said, "Thank you. We appreciate you. We love you." And I am sick to death of the James family constantly talking as if their son had no role in what happened. I'm sorry that your son was killed. That's a sad thing. But his actions led to that. And I'm sorry that he is not with you anymore. But at some point, we need to take personal responsibility and say, "This happened. Not, it wasn't all the police's fault." And guess what? He had a role in it as well. And unfortunately, his actions put the police in a position to do what they did. And I'm sorry that that happened, but that's the God's honest truth. Had he not been doing what he was doing, that wouldn't have ever happened. I've had plenty of interactions with the police chief, the officers in this city, and I have been 100% satisfied with their actions every single time I've dealt with them. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Police Chief. And thank you, City Council members and all of our CHPD. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate your comment.
I have Alan Burrell.
Alan, welcome. Alan Burrell.
Mayor, she's on mute. I think she's on mute still.
Yep, we can see it. Paula, if you can unmute, we'll need, oh. Alan, you're still on mute.
I'm just going to let her do it. Alan, if you could, please unmute.
Alan, you're on.
Okay. Now can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, wonderful. Well, good evening to everyone. And my topic tonight pertains to a meeting that's coming up on Friday. As the council may be aware, we have the Central Wasatch Commission having an important meeting coming up on Friday. They are going to be making an announcement about their Mountain Transportation System Initiative. For everyone present at the meeting today, the Central Wasatch Committee Commission referred to as the CWC includes government, nonprofit, business, and elected officials. I know Mayor Peterson often interacts with this group. And so I want to urge the council to be as vocal as possible with the CWC pertaining to their look at transportation. According to the Deseret News, and I'll quote them, "While the Utah Department of Transportation is going through a federal review analysis on potential transportation solutions to Little Cottonwood Canyon and Wasatch Boulevard, commission officials said they want to expand their scope to a region-based approach that may include beefing up transit options in the Salt Lake Valley," and then it goes on to say other things. And so as I represent an organization, coalition here in Cottonwood Heights that we call Save Not Pave, I want to go on record that our group, now over 600 strong, feels that this is a very important need for our community. We need inter-local cooperation between the city's county and state representatives for the southeast quadrant of Salt Lake Valley so that we can get a better transit and active transportation plan in motion for the southeast quadrant. So that instead of paving over the places that we love, we are going to be able to have better transit that's coordinated in a way that doesn't just serve the recreationalists, but serves the commuters and everyday people throughout, not only our city of Cottonwood Heights, but as I said, the southeast quadrant, which generally has not been a focus for UTA to build transit into because there are greater need parts of our valleys, such as the west side of the valley where more people rely on public transit. So nonetheless, I urge our City Council to be as vocal and involved with the CWC, the Wasatch Front Regional Council, and again, influence better transit for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Just a real quick clarification. Friday's meeting she's referring to is actually, it's just a, it's a panel presentation. There's no decision or action. It's a panel presentation for different modes of transportation, which includes bus, rail and bus, rail, and Don Dola. Yeah. All right, Paula, who's next?
I'm going to try Mike Hanson again.
Top Mike, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Go right ahead.
All right. Mike's got a migraine. I'm going to read for him. This is Shelley.
Okay, Ms. Hanson, go ahead.
Okay. So regarding the petition, there's been, there have been some questions regarding the petition and I'd like to try to answer some of those questions. Regarding church email lists, Councilperson Bruce posted on her Facebook page that a local bishop or his wife in the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints used the stake's email list to contact people to sign this petition. That charge is false, provably so, because the only bishop serving on this committee is no longer serving as a bishop in the church. Consequently, he no longer has access to any church email lists. He is forbidden by policy and prevented by software to access email lists. Further, no one else used church email lists. This effort- This effort was an organic neighbor-to-neighbor exercise. Churches were not involved, city leaders were not involved, CHPD was not involved. Non-resident signatures, there were certainly many attempts to sabotage the petition, particularly the online version. There were easily, they were easily thwarted, and the list you have before you in the packet is a good collection of signatures from Cottonwood Heights residents and those who own businesses within our city. To that charge, this list may contain false names. We note that we require each person signing the petition to declare he or she is a resident of city business owner. If someone presumably in support of Councilman Bruce signed the petition, it must, it must necessarily mean they actually want her to step down, or they're lying and they're cheating. Since we're willing to accept the, that none of Councilperson Bruce's supporters are liars and cheats, she must necessarily accept that they actually do want her off the council. Who is presented, who is represented, excuse me, to the best of our ability to determine the signators as citizens representing multiple political parties and independents, as well as various religious denominations and nonbelievers. It includes people from other than District Three because Councilperson Bruce's inappropriate actions have negatively impacted all Cottonwood Heights citizens and businesses. And unlike the marginalized people, Cottonwood, excuse me, Council, Councilperson Bruce claims to represent, though she does not define who they are, the signators include a large cross-section of District Three. She was actually elected to represent, and who will be voting next year. As far as racism is concerned, there are those who believe sending, standing with our police, including signing this petition, somehow standing against people of color. For the record, the petition signers, we believe the vast majority of Cottonwood Heights citizens believe racism in any form from, from or toward any people is morally reprehensible. Peaceful protests against racism are constitutional and morally good. All black lives matter, and all lives matter equally, and without regard to race, creed, color, or gender, any, or anything are sacred to God. I have one, one more sentence, is that okay?
Okay, one sentence, go ahead, finish.
Okay. We respectfully decline to say who wrote the grievances document other than to say that it was a District Three resident, and it was not of the people suspected of writing it by those on social media. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Paula, who's next?
I have Mr. Aaron James.
Aaron, welcome.
Thanks, can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Awesome, great. Thanks, Mr. Hammond, nice words and attack on my family and my deceased son. We're damn sick too, and it's a God's honest truth. You're just simply ignorant and simplifying what's happened. Tally, don't give up your fight, you're representing a few with an honest grievance that isn't contrived, that isn't something made up or mysterious. Thank you to Ms. Belk and Ms. Miklos and Mr. Hammond for demonstrating the CHPD's Gold Star efforts. That is not our grievance. We're not, we're not accusing the CHPD of having no good officers. There are, our grievances are with those that aren't good. We seem to have no voice in those matters. And yes, our family's alarmed. And regarding people that come from out of town, and these 2,000 or so business owners that would, that are representing this voice, without those people from out of town, this city would be Midvale. We wouldn't be a city between the canyons. So we need people from out of town, and they too have a voice in the city. Mayor, listening, I'm gonna refer, I'm gonna refer to the exact same article my wife referred to. You're really giving yourself some good pats on the back of being a good listener. And as my wife pointed out, you also need to be a good actor, it's your role as a leader. The leadership that you have requires action, and it's going beyond changing land use plans and worrying about parking permits and speed bumps on Timberline Drive. You have tough decisions ahead of you, and each of you, the mayor and the council members, were elected to make those tough decisions. On the points that we've asked, we've asked for charges to be dropped. Following the March DA's Office investigation, they didn't charge five of the eight marchers. So the city got your subcontracted legal team and got the courthouse that you rent, and decided to go ahead and give the rest of the charges to the people that weren't charged by the DA's office. We're gonna spend money on giving myself and other marchers jaywalking tickets, and we'll just ask the council again, a second time, for a summary of costs to be put in front of me and my family, so we can see what you're really spending on writing these tickets up. And we've also asked for Officer Russo, pardon me, Chief Russo and officers to be suspended. What actions has the city taken against the officers that had alternative methods available to them during the march? Accused is a fine example of that, with his billy club left many, including my son with a shot in the head, and many with bruises and scratches that are still remaining. Guys, no one has answered our request for assistance, not even from a person threatening my family's life in front of your officers. It says it's time to take some action already. It just looks like the majority of the council has lost their nerve. Perhaps you're scared of Russo, us too, we get it. Get him and the PD leadership out of here, and let's start serving and protecting our citizens. We've also asked for an independent investigation, there's been calls for an independent investigation to take note of the citizens' experience, other than that, that the CHPD and council members handpicked. Thank you for doing that. It took six weeks of pestering, but we still need to focus on which part each of you have in providing good governance to all of your constituents. And we've asked that the city listen and learned on the September 1st that there hadn't been an outlet before this time, which is surprising. Admittedly, I was shocked that the city manager didn't even know that there was a process for filing a formal complaint. Does this strike anyone on the council as an obvious example of the city's ignorance, understanding that their role is to come to the aid of its constituents? It leaves us with a feeling of hopelessness, a feeling in our city that doesn't have any interest in managing their own affairs.
Thank you, Aaron. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
I have, oh, I had Heather Anderson, but she fell from the queue here. Have Stephen Wall.
Go ahead, Mr. Wall.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
In my last statement I made, I obviously was one of those people who was on 6710 and had a unique experience with what went on. Miss, Bruce and I have had some encounters since that time, and there's a lot to be said about that experience. What I have trouble with is the fact that Ms. Bruce and some people that seem to be advocates for her want to somehow try and recast, or reimagine, or refocus what really happened there as into something that it really wasn't. Let me just say this, I told Ms. Bruce at the last town hall I attended at the park that we're done talking about 6710, not because it didn't matter, it does matter. What I wanted to talk about was facts. What troubled me, I think, as much as anything, is when we appeared at Knutson Park. And Ms. Bruce seemed to have very little information about the very thing that she was advocating for, and that was somehow redressing or addressing what was going on with our police department. We had approximately 25 residents from our neighborhood. They asked very good and pointed questions. I think the problem is, is that Ms. Bruce and those who followed her seemed to have not had to address or respond to people with, with some perception of what's really going on, such as her allegations about the police department, what it costs to run the police department, problems with the police department. She seemed to have no knowledge of what the budget was, how they arrived at a budget. One of the neighbors there asked her, they could not believe, they were astounded that she had no information. The only statistic she threw out was she said the cost was nine to 10% higher. Yet she failed to address what unifieds increase, unified fire departments increase was, what emergency services increase was, and said that she couldn't get any information relative to the police budget, and that we needed to do a grant request. Well, it was just, I went apoplectic. It was absolutely astounding that she would think she was talking to people that would believe that. I've since learned that, and I have spent a considerable amount of time looking into the matter myself, and let me tell you the three things that I have come up with. One is that the cost of running this police force in this city is considerably less than what it would be to transition to unify. That isn't even an issue anymore. And the fact that Ms. Bruce, after three years in office, didn't know that, ought to trouble anybody that's in her district, and certainly that's in the city, because it goes to the very basic issue competency. The other issue is, is that I look at in terms of whether we have a, an effective and good police agent, is how many excessive force complaints do we have? Well, in my investigation of that, guess what, after 10 years of a department, we have zero, zero excessive force complaints. The third leg of this would be response time. Are people complaining about police officers not showing up when they're called? Even Ms. Bruce, to my knowledge, doesn't have a complaint about this. So the three major-
We need, need to summarize, yeah.
Great, the three major concerns about this police department are not concerns. In fact, they militate heavily all of the facts in favor of this police department and its effectiveness, and what it does in our community, and which I'm truly grateful for. And the troubling thing, finally, is the fact that Ms. Bruce has presented as a completely incompetent councilperson in addressing the very issue that she claims that she is pursuing doggedly, and doesn't seem to have the facts to support what it is she's claiming.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wall. Appreciate your comments.
Sorry, I have to unmute two microphones. I have Tracy Barthwood.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Tracy.
Yes. Yeah, I'm a 47-year resident of Cottonwood Heights, and 27 of those have, I have lived where the, in the area on 6710 South where the protest took place. I'm also the spouse of a man who, for over 45 years, spent his career as a paramedic, Sandy City Police Officer, Salt Lake County Deputy, on the Motor Squad Traffic Division, et cetera. And he rounded out his career as the Assistant Chief Investigator for the District Attorney's Office. He served and protected the citizens of our city and county. He was an Eagle Scout, and he pledged the following oath or promise to honor, to do his best, pledged to hit, to do his duty to God and country, to other people and to self. My niece and nephew have somewhat followed in his, in his footsteps. They were influenced by him by joining the Army Air National Guard and served in the Middle East to protect our country. My niece has also followed in his footsteps and is also now a Division of Wildlife Resource Police Officer, as she was sworn in on his birthday. 21 months ago, the Cottonwood Heights Police arrived at my home within minutes of the 911 call I made, and took over CPR on this great man. The police, along with the fire department, worked on their brother in blue to no avail. This man, with whom I spent over 40 years, and flew this American flag with a thin blue line representing support for his profession. This flag was placed on my home and has been flying there for the past four years in addition to the American flag. A week ago Saturday, it was stolen from my home. I am heartbroken as we flew that proudly. And it was one of those things, my husband left me, which has been a comfort. It was a part of him, and now I am no, I no longer have it because we have a hate-filled, divided city, state, and country. Shame on those of you who don't respect those who served and protect us. I choose to believe that most people feel a duty to God, family, and country. I say to the person or people who stole my thin blue flag representing my husband and the pride of police officers, you will not break me or my support of a profession that deserves respect. What has happened to us as a country? What has happened to the, it's a loss of respect, and it's going to destroy our future. Ask yourselves, would, would they, would, would, I want you to just think about this as, how would this affect you if this were your family member? And the disrespect that it has and has caused. You know, what did your parents teach you? What are your children doing? I, it's, it's so alarming to me. I want to thank the dispatcher and police officer Crowley for listening to me in between my sobs on the loss of something that meant a lot to me personally and represented an honorable profession. And lastly, all lives matter, but not at the cost of not having a police department that truly cares. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Paula, who's next?
I have Debbie McIntosh.
Debbie, welcome.
Debbie, welcome.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. Go ahead, Debbie.
Perfect. As a Cottonwood Heights citizen, mother, and grandmother, I am speaking of the tactics of Councilwoman Natalie Bruce pertaining to the use and abuse of the James family and her troubling antics of following the national agenda to take out our police chief and department. The passing of Zane James has left a huge hole in this family's heart and lives. And to continually beat the drum and reminder of his absence is cruel and wrong on many levels. To give his family hope of seeing a mysterious video of their son's takedown without proof and video documentation is behavior unbecoming of a city councilwoman. Zane made some unfortunate choices of getting into drugs, alcohol, and especially armed robbery. The choice that not only impacted his family, but also the many victims he terrorized, including the businesses he robbed, CHPD, and now all of us as CH citizens. We do not condone or glorify criminal behavior, and Zane was behaving as a criminal for quite a while before he was stopped by an off-duty police officer. Police officers don't go around shooting people that are obeying the law. We owe police officers much gratitude for their dedication to us. Our officers are dedicated to protect the citizens of our city, and they take it seriously. On duty or off, they are our protectors. Hearts, soul, and minds are not to protect themselves by running from trouble or crime. Instead, they run to it with courage and strength. It is called duty to law and order. And how many of us are willing to do what they do, and they do it every day? My concern is not only for the James family, it is also for families, individuals, and the businesses that Zane had criminalized. What about their struggles putting their lives back together? Has anyone asked about them? Ms. Bruce, you are missing the mark by focusing on a fantasy of what you want our city to be. Where is your accountability and love for country? Do you even know what we as Cottonwood Heights citizens want for our city? Does that matter to you? We have our own concerns. It's not the national agenda which has made us feel marginalized by your choices to go rogue and demand for attention. Know this, as citizens, we are not victims, we are victors. At this time, as Cottonwood Heights citizens, we choose to come together as we choose to support the James family, as they mourn the loss of their son, the loss of him losing his way and all that entails, and the choice that cost him his life. We choose to support the victims of Zane's choices. We choose to support the men and women in blue that sacrificed their safety and protect us and our city. We choose to support law and order. We choose to support your stepping down as councilwoman in CH City. In closing, I'm so grateful for those who put this petition together and grateful to have signed it. We have come together as city residents to support our police, to establish and continue to work towards peace and security in our own city and let our voices be heard. Residents may still sign the petition at www.hite.com. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Debbie. Appreciate it. Paula, who's next?
I have Tim Miklos.
Tim Miklos?
I'm just unmuted. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Go ahead, Tim.
Hi, I am a resident of Cottonwood Heights. I've been here for just about 30 years. And I wanted to thank Mayor Peterson for the opportunity to speak tonight. And I wanted to compliment and thank Councilmember Doug Peterson for his thoughtful article, which was published in the September Cottonwood Heights newsletter. his thoughtful article, which was published in the September Cottonwood Heights newsletter. That article reminded me why I'm proud to be a member of the Cottonwood Heights community. I also wish to thank the citizens of Cottonwood Heights who organized the petition which was presented earlier. I believe that the majority of the citizens of Cottonwood Heights support our police as well as the rule of law. We want safety, security, and peace in our community. I expect our elected representatives to respect the views of all of their constituents and to represent them to the best of their ability, and also to work within the framework of our city government to meet the needs of the city and the citizens of Cottonwood Heights. I recommend that the city government draw up and institute a formal code of conduct for our elected officials, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Tim, appreciate your comments. Paula, who's next?
I have Heather Anderson.
Heather, welcome back, go ahead. Oh, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Go ahead, Heather, we can hear you.
Awesome. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result. I spoke at several city council meetings this summer regarding my concerns of Councilperson Bruce's behavior as a city official. Once I even tried to speak with her directly, sorry, ran out of breath, asthma, even tried to talk to her directly on her Facebook page, rather than answering my simple question, it was deleted and I was blocked from commenting. Ignoring questions, deleting them, and blocking people from asking or commenting is not how you inspire communication or transparency. So I was thrilled to hear about the petition on heightsoffreedom.org. There has been much speculation and many rumors spread by Councilperson Bruce and her supporters on social media regarding the petition being presented tonight. The fact of the matter is, it's much more boring and far more inspiring than some would like it to be. It was not created or funded by any city leader, the police department, or loser from Councilperson Bruce's last campaign. Heck, I wish I could take credit for it, but I can't. However, I am very proud to support it and sign it. The petition was a grassroots effort conducted by more than 50 citizen volunteers who personally paid for, passed out flyers, and collected signatures during a pandemic in only a few weeks. I am honored to say I helped. We are fed up with the lack of policy and laws in place to hold a sitting official responsible for their poor behavior and decisions that affect us all. The petition alone may not be legally binding, but it is a strong symbol of discord. Bruce's actions and behavior have divided some, but they've also brought many of us together, well over 2,000 of us and counting. I highly doubt Councilperson Bruce's narcissism will allow her to resign. In fact, I expect she will think it only proves she's making a change, and I would agree. By showing us all her muddled true colors, she shook the majority awake and empowered the silent to speak, so thank you. Thank you for inspiring me to lift my voice. Thank you for blocking me and many others from speaking directly to you on social media. I now know without a doubt you do not listen to the people of this community, which means you have broken your oath of office. You can't represent your constituents when you silence them. I will not continue to do the same thing and expect a different result. I will instead do something different. I ask the city to open an investigation against Councilperson Bruce pursuant to Utah Municipal Code Title 10, Chapter 3, Part 8, Section 826, titled Official Neg- sorry, my ASMR's really bad, titled Official Negligent, misconduct of a municipal officer removal from office. Public statements have been made since June of this year to now, but hundreds of citizens, along with the petition grievances and the pending criminal case against Councilperson Bruce, I believe that there is more than enough evidence to remove her from office. Until that time, I would request that Councilperson Bruce recuse herself from any business pertaining to our local police department, including any policy changes until all lawsuits regarding our police department have been cleared. I'm almost done, sorry, trying to breathe. Resign or don't, but know that more than 2,000 of us are not backing down. To the rest of the council, city manager, and our great officers, know that Bruce does not represented us, represent us. Thank you for all that you do, and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Heather, appreciate your comments. Paula and-
Inhaler.
I have Larry Turner.
Mr. Turner, go ahead. Go ahead, Larry. You'll need to unmute yourself. Paula, do we need to move on until he can get unmuted?
I don't have anyone else, and I think he's struggling to unmute. There we go.
There he is, Larry, go ahead. There you are, Larry, go ahead. I heard him coming. Go ahead, Larry. Go ahead, Larry. Larry, can you hear us? Can you hear us, Larry? Okay, I apologize, we're trying to be patient, let everybody face their thoughts and speak. Paula, is there anyone else?
I have Tracy LeFelt.
Tracy, go ahead.
Hi, this is Tracy LeFelt. I just wanted to address some of the things that I've heard tonight from other commenters. You know, I'm sympathetic to the difficult place the city of Cottonwood Heights and the police department find ourselves in. It is a very difficult place. And, you know, over the course of my life, I've had much cause to be grateful for police officers and for city government to take care of us and do the right thing. Unfortunately, though, I believe these, the difficulties that the city of Cottonwood Heights faces, and especially the difficulties that the police force faces, are self-inflicted wounds. There was, you know, somebody earlier said there was no, no complaints of police brutality or undue use of force. Well, yes, there are. You know, for example, in the death of Zane James, that, that people from Cottonwood Heights were out protesting on the second. And then unfortunately, the Cottonwood Heights Police Department escalated and used brutality against those protesters, and... So these are self-inflicted wounds that we are waiting for action on. I have yet to hear an apology from Police Chief Russo, from the city council, for these atrocities. And time is going by. I, you know, now, now we've got dueling petitions, we've got these entrenched opposite stances, you're in the national news, I think you'll continue to be in the national news, until you resolve this, these issues, these self-inflicted wounds, with apologies and, and with justice. And so, I would echo those who have called for action on behalf of the city council and the police. Instead of perpetrating the harm that you've done, it's time to heal that harm and make restitution for that harm that you've caused to people in North City, including many of those who live there, and especially Zane James. You know, I was touched by the woman whose, whose family served in so many ways, and her, her thin blue line flag was stolen, and I sympathize with that. That's a terrible thing, but Zane James' life was stolen, and I didn't hear her, I didn't hear her emotion, I didn't hear her sorrow for that. I heard somebody complain about the Zane, the James family continuing to complain about this. Well, the reason they're complaining is they haven't received the justice that they're looking for, and they're going to continue to complain. So it really is time for action, it's past time for action, and I hope you come around at some point to doing the right thing. Thank you.
Tracy, thank you. Paula, do we have anyone else who's signed up? Troy Riplinger, go ahead, Troy.
Thank you for taking my time, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
This one is addressed to Councilwoman Bruce. Ms. Bruce, we're a republic, no doubt you've heard the-
Uh-oh. Troy, why don't you try again?
Can you hear me now better?
Yes, go right ahead.
I think-
Start over, start over.
This is addressed to Councilwoman Bruce. Ms. Bruce, things that you know, we are a republic. You led us in, in the pledge this evening, and to the republic for which it stands. So a republic is a representative government. That means your role as a councilperson is to represent all the constituents. It requires not only listening to all, but the one, and not just the one, but all. To be open and sincerely grateful for all points of view, especially when they differ from yours, and that's hard to hear. To consider them, ponder them, reflect upon them, that takes time. And because of that, judgment is typically deferred until the right course can be determined. Being a councilperson is a mature person's game, and if done right, it lifts the whole and improves all. Any leader can come into a preconceived notion, can come to office with preconceived notions and agenda, but a mature leader will first spend his or her time listening and learning to gain further insight, to communicate ideas back and forth in the arenas of ideas so that the right one prevails. In the process, they will realize, if they haven't already, that their constituents are very educated people, who are entrusting that councilperson to look after the well-being of the entire community. Councilwoman Bruce, you are positioned to be so amazing, but you seem to stray away from it so consistently, and you pride yourself in it, and I struggle to understand that. It's a defiant nature in you, and, and that shows a lack of self-reflection. You and your supporters condescend, drowned out, block those with a differing view. Weak people do that, not strong people. The only people who do that are, whose ideas are so weak that they have to bury others' viewpoints, and that's a bully sign. And this is what you do to your district. You enlist others to do the dirty work for you, so that you can seem above it, although you're really behind it, orchestrating. To have an honest discussion with you, can people believe that's even possible? You hide the truth, you misdirect, you change the narrative, double down, and then when all those fails, you play the victim card. Councilwoman Bruce, in order to be dishonest, you must first know the truth, so that it can, you can determine how to spin it. And that's you. Speaking of the Zane James family, boy, all of you guys want everyone to take responsibility, but what about you? You don't want the people in the riot to take responsibility, and what about the James family? Did you seek them out? Did you seek them out for your, so word on the street is you have a personal vendetta with the police? Fine, that's okay. You ran for office, fine, that's okay. Did you seek the Zane James family out to exploit their hurts? I can't imagine what that's like, but you've got them into not even being responsible for anything they could have done. How many exits could they have, did they pass as a family that could have stopped what happened? No responsibility-
I'm sorry, we, the time has a little passed, thank you very much for your comments. Paula, who's next?
I have Justice Cottonwood.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Karma Frye, I am a Cottonwood Heights resident. First of all, I want to thank you for seeking out eyewitnesses to the Mill Hollow incident. I appreciate you following through with that. It's been disturbing to read the newspaper report that officers told lies about what happened at the protest. Specifically, it said every officer involved in a physical confrontation had their body cam pulled from them at one point. There is, there, multiple, multiple, multiple protesters have submitted footage that showed that that is absolutely not true. So I hope that you've all taken the time to watch that footage. Footage. At last meeting, one of the city council members accused people of doctoring that footage, and this shows an extremely unprofessional bias. I think it's important that the city council remains unbiased, and we've noticed from the many calls here that there is a strong lean in one direction on this issue, and these issues are not black and white. This is not a police are good, police are bad issue. It's not about that, it's about holding police accountable for police brutality. So I'm concerned that the city council is biased, also based on some very rude smirks that one of the council members was making throughout the comments last time, particularly when people were talking about the death of Zane James, and I am so disturbed, I am so disheartened after hearing all the negative comments about someone who lost their life. We all know that it is not up to the police officers to be judge, jury, and executioner. That's not how the system works. Even if he was breaking the law, he didn't deserve to die, that's not a death sentence. So I am just sick and so sorry that the James family had to listen to the heartless comments. The, the reason that there is tension, I know there's been a lot of concern about how the police are being viewed by our community members, and again, this is not a black and white issue, and so what we're asking for, what I'm asking for, is for the city council member to take part in repairing the relationships by holding police accountable for abusive behavior. And last week in the meeting, you said that you would answer questions, I believe the email, so here are the questions that I have. So I'll be looking forward to having an email response and reply to these questions. Number one, what are the police review slash accountability procedures? Number two, does Cottonwood Heights have any provisions for citizen oversight? Number three, is there a civilian oversight panel to review police shootings and misconduct? Four, what is the threshold for indicting police for misconduct? Five, do Cottonwood Heights Police do diversity slash implicit bias training? And if so, what does that training consist of? And finally, number six, what is the Cottonwood Heights Police Department's policy on chokeholds? Thank you.
Thank you, Karma, appreciate your comments and your questions. I, would that be the last one, Paula? I know we've been over now.
I have Karen Toll.
Hey, Karen, go ahead. Karen, you're on, go ahead. Can you hear us, Karen? Karen, go ahead.
Our audio is not connecting.
I know, we have, that's the second one we've had a challenge with, I think Larry Turner was the same, and now- I know, that's the second one we've had a challenge with. I think Larry Turner was the same, and now Karen. Karen, can you hear us? Go ahead Karen. You there Karen? I apologize, I obviously don't know what the issue is. Paula, is there anyone else?
I'm gonna let Sharon Ferry, Sean Ferry talk. Oh my gosh, wait.
Sean, are you there? Sean, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Go ahead Sean, we can hear you. Go ahead Sean.
Thank you. Just quickly, I would like to again voice my appreciation for the Cottonwood Heights Police. I find it unfortunate that I disagree a couple of things. If you're watching just what's on TV and in the news, the media gets it wrong 90% of the time. You don't get all the facts, you don't get all the details. There's much more that goes on behind the scenes that is never reported and it's not often reported accurately, even if they are trying to be unbiased. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I disagree with the premise that there's all kinds of excessive force being used or some type of police brutality. And so we therefore need to have an investigation. If you want to go on that premise, then that makes it sound like there's all kinds of problems. But that's not necessarily the correct thing. There has also been several calls for action tonight. And action being that we need to make changes to the police department. I disagree with that as well. And I think a lot of people in our city disagree with those action items. Certainly some action items need to be taken, but those are not necessarily ones we all agree need to be taken. And I, I'm very disappointed that it seems that this is all turning out to be pitting the James family against everybody else. That's unfortunate. They've suffered a tragic loss. Nobody should have to bury their own child. That's terrible. It's unfortunate that everybody needs to be taking responsibility for their own actions. And we need to look at all aspects of that. We live in a wonderful city. Lots of good things happen. Wonderful things are happening all over the city. I appreciate what Doug Peterson wrote in his article in this past newsletter. And if anything, we should be reaching out and reaching our arms around each other, including the James family, and consoling losses and trying to make things better. It doesn't mean we throw out the police or anybody else. It means we have civil discourse. And what has been brought into our city recently by way of protests, by way of demonstrations, especially bringing people from outside in and creating further discord is wrong and shouldn't happen. And I appreciate otherwise the police and I appreciate positive and peaceful discourse and good acts of service towards each other. Thank you.
Thank you Sean, appreciate your comments. Paula, do you have anyone else?
Yes, I'm gonna try Karen again.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you now Karen, go ahead.
Great. I actually have never spoken at a city council meeting, which is unusual for the group. I've listened many times. And I was calling tonight to talk about parking, not about what I'm gonna talk about. So first of all, I don't think any of you make enough money to deal with what's been going on in our neighborhoods the last couple of years. I believe that there's a huge-
I believe that there's a huge section of us in the middle, somewhere between the petition against the police and for the police. There's a lot of us in the middle just trying to raise our kids during COVID, during a super tough time. And I feel like as a professional woman, I go to work every day and I have to get along with people that don't believe exactly like I do. And I feel like having two lawsuits between our police department and our city council, having like zero discussions about things that Salt Lake City is tackling, like new policies. Even back to my original intent, which was parking, getting away with putting no parking signs completely through our high school neighborhoods when they're under construction, our trail neighborhoods when people are trying to get out and about, our ski neighborhoods. It's also polarizing. And I think as a group of professionals, what I expect of you for paying my taxes is for you all to get together and try to come up with some solutions and try to invoke positivity in our neighborhood. We live in a great place. Our children are struggling. They don't want to see militia people with zero police presence at city hall, next to a high school, in a church, in a grade school. I don't want helicopters flying over my children. And we all have our rights. We all have our constitutional rights. There's rights to bear arms, there's rights to protest. But the respect that is coming about by these flyers showing up on doorsteps, by these continued complaints, it's not helping. As a group, try to figure out how to come to some resolutions. I've had amazing police and fire response to a fire in my garage, to children in need. I've had extremely terrible upsetting for six years that I've held inside that I should have filed a complaint against the police. That was an officer who did a poor job. Let's take care of the bad seeds in the way they're supposed to be taken care of. It's not all police, it's not all city council. Thank you. I just want to make sure that, remember those of us in the middle that aren't constantly complaining all the time and do right by our children and what's right for us.
Thank you Karen, appreciate your comments. Paula, do we have something else? Anyone else?
I have Aiden Lefell.
Go ahead Aiden.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right. Hey, my name's Aiden. I live outside of your city. But in regards to Mr. Hammond's comment, I feel that I have a right to be a part of this meeting because I was traumatized by the police in your city. Two weeks ago at the city council meeting, I was told that you were obligated to answer my questions and that you had released all the unedited body camera videos. This does not appear to be true. First, the released body cam videos appear not to be unedited. Some are missing up to 40 minutes, others cut out audio. And the ones that haven't already covered, haven't already covered, I haven't already covered, appear to be edited into segments that skip over key parts of the violent attack. Second, of the body cam videos released, of the body cam videos released, they failed to include footage from any officers that delivered the most inhumane brutal attacks on citizens. I sent you both some footage. You should be easily, you should be able to easily identify the officer cams in question. It didn't take me a month either to make up my story because I stuck with the truth and I had them online within hours and in your hands before the following business day. Where are these videos? Third, even though with, even with the limited and clearly edited videos, the evidence incriminates your department entirely. I asked the question, have either of you watched them in their entirety? Please let me know when I can expect to see full, unedited videos from the officers that day. I specifically asked for footage from Officer McHugh. This sort of sneaky dishonest behavior only adds to my trauma caused by your city. This is unacceptable. And I'd also like to address the continued abuse to Councilwoman Tally Bruce. You have allowed years of harassment from your police chief. You've allowed her to be assaulted by police officers in your own city. You've sent or allowed our militia to scare your constituents into signing a petition that spreads false narrative and slanderous claims against Tally Bruce. Tonight is only a continuation of that abuse. Your attack on Tally is so clearly an attempt to distract us from criminal behavior of your police and your city. Not only is this behavior unacceptable, it's secondhand embarrassing and it looks like a last grasp effort to cover up the lies that you've spun. Thank you.
Thank you Aiden. Paula, do we have anyone else?
Kim Steenblick.
Kim Steenblick, Kim, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I just wanted to speak in regards to the petition that was presented tonight. I gladly signed the petition. I feel that I have gone to a couple of meetings where Tally Bruce, that Tally Bruce has held. And I felt that my voice was not represented by her and I think a lot of us feel that way. And so I was grateful for the opportunity to be able to sign something that represents my voice. It is the duty of a councilperson to represent all of their constituents. I feel that she does represent some constituents. There's no doubt about that. And she does it passionately and does a good job at that. But she has not represented what I believe and what I feel. And I think the petition stands for itself that she does not represent the majority of the constituents. And I just want to echo some of the things that Heather said. I thought she did a really good job despite her asthma. Anyway, I hope you'll look at the petition and I don't think that Ms. Bruce will step down, but I hope that you will look at the petition in a way that she does not represent us and know that. Thank you for my time.
Thank you Kim, appreciate your comments. Paula, anyone else?
No sir, I have no one else.
All right, we'll call an end to our public or citizen comment period then. And appreciate everyone's comments. I think it's appropriate, Tim, if you'll just take 30 seconds and share with the audience because 90% of the comments regarding this ongoing issue, maybe take 30 seconds and talk about, or I can do, you correct me. We want people to know that this discussion obviously is not gonna end. We have a responsibility to listen. Some people think we should be more action oriented, but we gotta listen first. We do, we are looking for a date going forward to have a special work session to talk about some policy and best practices. Utah League of Cities and Towns, Tim has been participating in a almost weekly or bi-weekly meeting with a variety of, you know, people from Black Lives Matter, NAACP, city managers, mayors, a variety. They're looking at recommendations to propose to the state legislature. So obviously, as people read the news, this is an issue that's out there everywhere. And we're taking it all in and we will act accordingly. Again, we're a council of five. The mayor has one vote, no more. And the rest of the other four council members each have a vote. So we'll be proceeding appropriately. You know, again, I think we have outstanding police department officers. I appreciate their ongoing service during these challenging times, as well as we appreciate our planning department and our public works fund. All those people are trying to provide services. But these are challenging times. And so a few people ask questions and appropriately Tim will respond to those as well, rather than getting into a dialogue here. I give the council, anybody have a quick comment since I took a moment?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll take, I'll take just a second. It seems unfair that people can come on and make public comment and have it stand as if it were fact. It's just perpetuating the lies and mistruths that are being spread about me. I apologize to the constituent who posted on my political wall and was blocked. I do have a Facebook administrator and she's pretty protective of me and she's quick to block anyone that she deems posting hate speech. So feel free to private message me through that political Facebook page and I will respond. And just know that she screens hate speech and blocks those users. I was accused of bringing in outside agitators. That's just absurd. And I think it was Shelley Hansen who said that I accused a bishop of promoting the Freedom Heights website. I did not. That's, there's just so many nuances and things get construed and mistold and then told repeatedly. David Williams was using the stake directory on his own accord. I don't think it had anything to do with the Freedom Heights group. I attended the Zane James March for Justice because I was invited to be there by my constituents. I had no part in organizing it. I haven't organized some five different events throughout the valley. I've been given a lot of credit for organizing the event that came the very next day. I didn't, I did not even attend that event. There were calls for violence and I opted not to be there. Regarding the website, I've had some savvy IT teenagers take a deep dive into it and it's, it's not credible in terms of signatures. It doesn't screen people for being Cottonwood Heights residents. You're allowed to sign multiple times. I was told that Chief Russo would sign multiple times, like a dozen times. It's not statistically valid. I get that it's a great source for people to come together. They've got this tribe with someone to hate. That tribe of hate is a strong identity and I get it. I'm the poster child for that hatred right now. And also the petition is not a democratic process. That's not how we do things in a democracy. You can hate me all you want, but that, I'm not gonna step down because some white supremacist thinks that he has the three votes to get into my spot. That was not, that would not be a democratic process either. So we will wait, we will wait it out. And I want to end with, I absolutely love and respect and so greatly appreciate ethical police, honest police, compassionate police, and some of, some of the people that I look to for advice in my business and personal regard are police. And I have the utmost respect for them. Those that are ethical, honest, trustworthy.
Right, thank you, thank you Tally. Anyone else have a quick comment?
Mayor, can I say something real quick? I think just to be fair, I think, I think we ought to fact check all this because I know Tally likes playing the victim a lot of times. But the things I heard, I didn't hear any, anything that wasn't truth except for coming from some other people. So just to be fair, let's fact check this. We've got all the, everything that everybody said. And let's be fair, let's fact check it and we'll see how that comes out. Because I, I love truth. And if it's, if it's not the truth, then let's point it out. But if it's a lie, let's point that out. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you Doug. Scott or Christine, any comments?
I do have a comment and a couple of quotes. First off, what was posted about the bishop was there is an LDS bishop that is using stake email to send slanderous emails about me and it was in response to the petition. That was, that was a side note. My primary purpose was unfortunately dealing with something that was a little more purpose, personal, and also just as inaccurate. People get on here and say all kinds of things and we expect that people believe them to be true. Unfortunately, that's a poster child thing, I guess. But on September 7th at 1:39 PM, it was posted that hatred has taken this group door to door throughout the city seeking to spread their hatred of me. And hatred has spread, has had the spouse of a fellow council member approaching attendees at her church warehouse soliciting them to join the cause of hating me. Well, I can do math pretty easily. Christine, to the best of my knowledge, you do not have a wife. So that leaves two of us. And I know one of them and I know what she does. And that accusation is false and completely misguided. I don't care where you heard it. Maybe you should factor, it doesn't matter.
It matters because we want to talk about truth. Doug said we wanted to get to what's true.
I'm sorry, I'm excuse me.
We want to get to what's true. I'm just letting you know it wasn't you.
Okay, thank you Tally.
The reality is-
I'm not gonna do a kind of- Not going to do a point counterpoint. Give each personal comment.
I'm just, I'm, it also elicited a phone call from Kathy concerned that anyone would think that she would do something so heinous. These lies, this rumor mongering has an impact and it's despicable.
Okay, Scott. Christine, if you want to make a comment, then we'll move on.
The only thing that I can say at this point in time is that if people want truths, you should go to the source. If people want to know where Tally stands, speak to her. As a council, we need to remain unbiased. We need to wait for the facts from our city manager to make determinations. I, I can't believe what has just happened the last couple of minutes. I guess I live in a cave. But I think as council members, we need to show respect. We need to listen, as the mayor says, actively listen. We need to wait for the facts that come out from our city manager and the Utah AG's office. And as a community, we need to wait for those facts. And then we can talk about what happened. But I'm, I have the newsletter next month and I, I don't even know where to begin with that newsletter. Because I, as an elected official for the city of Cottonwood Heights, I'm disappointed on many levels and I hope as a community that we can rise above this and we can work together and we can start to look for facts and compassion. I, wow. And as elected officials, we need to be the leaders to show that we are leading. Let's not fall prey to what just happened right now, please.
All right, Christine, well stated. And again, as we've said in the last few meetings, these are emotional times. I know I get, as soon as I say something, I'll get four emails criticized when I say it, but it is a time to heal and find some common ground. It's going to take some time. We're not, we're not unique in Cottonwood Heights. Obviously, other cities are dealing with it in the valley and across the country, but we have got to move forward. I appreciate Tally's comments about her appreciation for quality police force. I think we do have a quality police force and I hope our officers recognize our support for them during these challenging, challenging times. I was concerned when I heard an officer, honestly, last night on the news, encouraging people to take a different profession, whatever you don't get into this. We need quality police officers. And in future weeks of the city, we'll be looking at ways to strengthen our police department as well as looking at best practices. Again, lots of discussions, lots of comments I'm sure are in people's minds. We'll get those in the future. Appreciate your patience and those in the audience, your understanding and recognizing the challenges that we have. And the great thing about America is you all get to have your comment and you have a right to speak your piece. And we've heard that tonight and, and from our council members briefly. We're going to now move forward to another public comment period that's on the trail access plan. I'm going to ask Mike Johnson to introduce that quickly and if people who want to speak specifically about the trail access plan, if you'll be ready and Paula will call on you in a minute.
Thank you, Mayor. The plan was introduced at the last council meeting. It's been through planning commission. Just in a one sentence summary, it's a, it's a master plan whose purpose is to identify access to the future Bonneville Shoreline Trail. It doesn't have to do with the actual trail alignment itself. It's just if that trail is in the city, how do we access it and what does that access look like? Where can it go? Since the last meeting, some recommendations were made for modifications. Those are now posted. They were, they were distributed to the council members. The revised plan and then a summary of the changes are posted on the website. There's only a small handful of them. You can see them here. We've added the Little Cottonwood Canyon Park and Ride as potential regional access point. Added additional language recommending that we explore policies at local access points to limit parking and traffic. Added the recommendation to eliminate or repurpose Ferguson Canyon Trailhead parking upon the completion of the larger regional lot in the area. And then again, added more detail on that Little Cottonwood Park and Ride lot. So unless you have any specific questions, I'll just leave it at that and I'm happy to pull up any, any page in the plan you're curious about.
Mike, thank you for sharing that and appreciate you mailing that out to us previously. I had a chance to review it and I think that represents well what we discussed in our meeting a couple of weeks ago. Any comments on that quickly before we turn it out? All right, Paula, do we have anybody who would like to speak to the trail access plan?
No, Mayor, we have no raised hands.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Tim.
So there were two written comments that were submitted. One is from Colleen Hancock. And I will forward, this will be part of the record. I will forward all of this on to the council. And the next comment came from Mary Lee Christensen related to the access plan. I will forward this to the council, but this will be part of the public record, these comments, these written comments.
All right, thank you for that, Tim. I know Lisa Merrillise, she emailed me as well and she was just, wanted some clarification. So appreciate those written comments and now patiently waiting.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I just had a question. Where you, we talk about a regional trailhead number three. For some reason, I thought we were talking about not having for, did we agree that Ferguson Canyon was a regional trailhead? Or were we trying to put the regional trailheads on the?
We've identified number three as a regional trailhead because we're under contract with the county to build that parking lot. So we added it in there because we're obligated to build it.
Oh, and that, and that, sorry, now I remember, but in that, and as part of that agreement, it needs to be considered regional. Just because it has the parking and the bathrooms and everything, right?
Right. Regional is defined as having parking stalls and more amenities. Local is just foot traffic.
But I think we agreed that number nine would be less than regional.
Yeah, in the plan, there's flexibility. It's not a set, you know, it's regional designed based on the context of the site that it's located at. So there's flexibility there.
Can we, if there's flexibility, can we just change it to a square instead of a circle now? I mean, it's a plan. Why do we have to start with, with that?
We can certainly modify regional. If I, I'll just go to the definition of it quick and if you want to change it.
Sorry, I thought, I thought we had, I thought we chatted about that.
I, I thought, I thought number nine was less regional and less flexibility. And maybe after public comment tonight, we can make that adjustment and chat about it, yeah.
Yeah, so regional is, is there. Yeah, I mean, if we want to emphasize scaling that one back, I think it's called out in specific later in the plan. So we can, we can define it as something else, but you know, it does best fit the definition of regional plan. But we could add in there that maybe we look at limited parking or limited capacity when compared to the other ones.
I, I think so, just only because you have 10, which is just up the road, which has pretty significant parking. And then hopefully you'll have that connector and it's on a blind corner and I, I don't know, it just seems like I'd prefer.
Doesn't make any sense to make that 9A and 9B? Or does that not work?
Thank you, Doug, yeah.
It doesn't make anything work. So, so if you want to change, we'll get it done.
Well, tonight is public comment and so we'll take public.
Guess we should take the comment first and discuss it later.
Yeah, but I think, but I, I, I think what, what I understood with number nine, it was something that was less than regional that we see in, in one. It's, it's, it's more like number two up there, yeah. But anyway, but I think we, we need to bring that back after the public comment period, which we don't have any. So Mike, you get the, you got some more feedback from the council?
Yes, thank you.
All right, we will now close the public comment period on trail access plan. And now we will go back to our favorite UFA Assistant Chief Riley Pilgrim. Riley, go ahead.
Awesome, thanks. So tonight what I have, council is just our April to June quarterly report. I'll try to keep it brief as we're kind of running up against the nine o'clock hour.
Take whatever time you need.
Yeah, just some basic statistics on that. And then once we get finished, I can kind of share some of the recent events that we've been participating in as an organization, which I think will be pretty interesting to everybody. So I'm going to try to do, I know it's been tough, is do the screen share so you guys see my PowerPoint. I did email a PDF copy earlier, so hopefully I got in everyone's hands. Let's see if I make this happen here. All right, has everybody seen the PowerPoint? We're good?
We're good.
All right, let's do this. Okay, so we put this together using a software that we call Intera. Intera takes basically all of our dispatch data and imports it into this application. And it makes it easier for us to pull our statistics. We started doing this about two years ago. The thing that's nice about this is I can pull up call data anytime of the day. And most of our captains and battalion chiefs will also have access to this. So it makes it really usable. Where before extracting data is pretty complicated. This slide you see here is basically the months compared to last year and then top single boxes are quarterly incidents over the last three years, going back to 17. What you'll notice is we've seen a slight increase going into May and June, but our April is a little bit lower than usual. And I think a lot of that could be attributed to COVID. What we, what we did notice, especially in that March, April timeframe is a decrease in calls. And we were expecting an increase. We actually saw the opposite, which we think again is attributed to a lot of public outreach in terms of don't call unless you're really, really, really feeling sick or have an emergency, which we think was pretty effective. Maybe it was too effective, but you'll notice for us, there's not a really big increase in calls. So for me, there's nothing too concerning that I see there. Let's see here. Okay. Instant calls by, I guess, instant types. So as you guys probably seen in the news, we've had a few fires in Cottonwood Heights, some lately. But this shows over that quarter, we had four structure fires, not necessarily all legitimate large scale structure fires. I do believe we had one or two during that quarter. And then what we'd expect is small outside fires and natural vegetation fires for that April, May and June, which is still typically kind of slow around here for those outside fires until, you know, expect to see a large increase in that until July, August, September, where we are right now. Medical calls, again predominantly falls and sick persons. Doesn't, we, we could get into details. I don't have them with me right now that, of the types of causes and how many were COVID related. Didn't see a huge increase in those until later in the summer, actually until maybe June, July. That's when it seemed like we started responding on a few more of those than usual. So nothing too alarming there. The psychiatric calls, you know, might be a little higher seam high. There, there was some attribution to COVID and just some of the mental stress that put on people. But you know, a lot of that's just stuff that was being, you know, shared media wise through thoughts, but there's really no, for us, no correlation that we've identified. But you know, definitely is a possibility there, but what we're seeing here, there's nothing too out of the ordinary for our population based in Cottonwood Heights. Other top five dispatches that fall outside of our fire and medical calls. This is common throughout the fire service, especially around here, but we do go on a lot of false alarms. So what you see here with those unintentional or system malfunctions, those are, those are pretty common. Especially when you have a lot of businesses or most residents now are getting monitored services for both, you know, burglary and fire. So we do get sent out on a lot of those and there's false activations. But those systems are typically working. They're notifying us of some kind of problem, but a lot of times it could just be unintentional. Few public service ones and then the, the last one combustible or flammable, those are typically gas leaks. So natural gas, we're just missing the bottom part there, but it's usually a spill or leak. And so five of those isn't too out of the ordinary for us. The scatter plot, the diagram here, you'll see kind of the higher concentrations kind of on the western portion of the city, typically related to high density locations, like Santa Fe apartments and the business complex around there. I will typically see our higher volume of calls. Assistant living centers, so either Wentworth, not uncommon to respond there to more frequently than other places. And so you're kind of noticing those areas, high density, again, you're going to generate more calls for us. But nothing too alarming that, again, that we're, we're seeing there, so. This one right here kind of stands out to me and I'll share why in a second. So I know last time we discussed this or on my part, there's a little bit of confusion. So each one of these calls represents a 90th percentile. So 90% of our calls or below are being processed at this time or faster. So only 10% of our calls are going to fall above these timeframes, which is pretty good. Call processing, we're seeing a big improvement with VEC. As you probably are well aware, there's been some pretty big things happening with VEC. They just did a legislative audit, reduced their, presented the findings of VEC and there's quite a few troubling things, especially with them not processing calls and respond, do basically mean they're, they're standard. So there's been a lot of improvements that have happened since the new dispatch director was brought in February. And we have seen some pretty immediate corrections. And one of the biggest things is that call processing. They're, they're getting our resources dispatched a lot quicker than we had seen before. So call processing in a minute 25 for a fire seems pretty high. While our crews are watching aboard in the station when those fire calls populate, they're able to basically go en route before dispatch even sends us. One thing that we have direct control over is our turnout time. So we're at a minute 13, which again is phenomenal. Our, our target's two minutes. What that means is from the time that dispatch sends it to our station to the time the engine's rolling out. And so our firefighters are leaving the station 90% of the time under a minute 13 seconds, which again just is pretty outstanding. So when it comes to that total response at the end, the turnout time is one thing we have direct control over as an organization. So to me, that's, that's actually an impressive number when you look at the clock here. And I got to figure out why that shows there. I can, I'll double check that data, but 113 is pretty quick. So that actually could be a little off, but I lean towards, they're doing a pretty excellent job there. Travel time is one area we do typically have a little more difficulty with because we don't have as much control over travel and how we get there, especially with traffic conditions. And the one thing that's kind of stands out to me that I want to look into a little more on here, it shows a 12:07 fire response and the chart shown just under 11 minutes. And so total response, that's not where we want to be. Going back to the numbers where there's only four fires, it's possible that one of those fires had a time that is outside of that window. We tried to get there within six minutes or less on a lot of our times. You'll see in our statistics, I kind of pulled this one up just to double check where we're at. And majority of our calls, so looks like when we look at our percentiles, majority of our calls are falling still below that 90th percentile out here. We're looking at for the 400 plus calls we went on, only six were above that. So, so we're doing a pretty good job of meeting that 90th percentile. I want to dig into this 12 minute here on the chart and the 11 minute up here to make sure there's nothing that stands out. Most of the calls are, are fire crews going on Cottonwood Heights. What we've seen in the last quarters, one of them's committed to a medical call and the other resource in Cottonwood Heights is responding into their area. I think, I believe we had two fires like that. We did have one that was rather quick where the engine was out and they were hap, they just happened to be driving by the neighborhood when the fire call came in. And they're, they're pretty quick. And so that number should be a little bit lower. So I'm going to look into that and if I find anything, I'll definitely share that, so. Any questions on this chart? Can be kind of confusing, but our, our goal or what this explains is our 90th percentile being below that, which is pretty good, so. Again, just picture the station location for those who are watching. Station 110, which is in Cottonwood Heights, four handed station. This one stands out because it does have our ladder truck. It has a tiller apparatus in there and an ambulance. And so we staffed this one with four on the ladder and typically two on the ambulance. And so that station is fully staffed, has all And so that station is fully staffed, has all, all the personnel. Especially to operate the ladder, sometimes that can be a little tricky, so it's good to have those staffed up to that number. As far as the call volumes go in that station, they are a little bit busier. The two Collin Heights stations, one-ten seems to go on on more calls than one-sixteen does. You'll see the numbers kind of show that, so ninety for April, which, again, a little bit of a drop. Likely related to, again, COVID and just not as many people calling us for service in May and June, as things kind of slowly went back to normal, people are getting out. We start going on more calls, especially when people start recreating during the summer. It's not uncommon to see a spike in those summer months, so. Station one-sixteen on Wasatch Boulevard, three-handed station with a medic engine there. And again, every call that we go on in Collin Heights, whatever apparatus shows up first, whether it's ambulance or the heavy apparatus, those will always have a paramedic on them, so. So that, that's always good to make sure we have ALS on scene, especially when we get those calls. Or that intervention is necessary. So that's one thing we make sure we have, always getting a paramedic on scene with those first calls. And as I shared before, sometimes that can make a big difference, and sometimes there's not a lot we can do once we get there, but that paramedic definitely is the best chance of making a difference on that call, so. And then you'll see, again, for one-sixteen, their, their call numbers are drastically lower than one-ten being more in that residential area. They're typically going to respond on less calls because of density up in that area, so. Again, I think one-ten typically is busier just because of what, where they're at and their, their position to respond to some of those higher frequency or occupation or occupancies, where you tend to see more, more call, call volumes, so. And that's it for us. As far as community events go, we actually didn't do a whole lot, as you're aware. The first event we got into was a rolling car show in August. But our station tours, we still have kind of stations on lockdown, just out of best practices. We're definitely interested in re-engaging with our community on that, that personal level. It's something that we all enjoy doing. So that's one of the challenges of COVID, it's kind of removed or prevented us from having that interaction with schools and with scouting groups and with youth groups and other, other individuals who like coming to the fire station, so hopefully as things continue to improve or get better with COVID, we're able to kind of reengage in those kind of activities. So is there any questions on the quarterly report itself?
Any questions from the council? Just Riley, one question or one comment on the fire response to twelve minutes, seven seconds. If you add up the three numbers on the bottom, it was actually eleven minutes forty-five seconds, so there is something off there a little bit, but not, not a material amount, yeah.
I'll dig into that, too, and make sure there's nothing that stands out to you. That, that number is a little atypical for us, so I want to make sure there is nothing odd that happened on one of those calls.
Yeah.
And then, and then to wrap up, we didn't include it in here just because of the quarterly report, but as everyone is aware, we did hold services for Chris Cage last week. Really small, small event. His family kind of wanted to keep it personal, but again, it was just a great reminder of the commitment he had not only to our organization, but the community of Collin Heights. It's pretty humbling to hear the stuff that he was involved with and the things he participated in. And then just kind of as a heads up to the council, Mayor Peterson's aware, but we've also been supporting multiple deployments over the last two or three weeks. We sent out our urban search and rescue team, eighty individuals, thirty-six from Unified Fire Authority, and then the remaining from five other departments within the valley to go assist, assist with recovery efforts in Oregon. They're doing search of structures that were destroyed by the fire, which is kind of a difficult job for those individuals. So we're anticipating them to be out there for two weeks, and we've also sent several firefighters to both California and Oregon to also engage in the suppression and management efforts of those wildfires. Pretty catastrophic events going on out there, but the experience that our personnel bring back to our communities is it's unparalleled and unrivaled, and it's an unfortunate event, and it's, it's, you know, one of those things that's difficult, but it is very valuable to us when we can go participate in those events and bring it back and see the direct benefits here on our, in our communities, so we appreciate the support that, you know, that we get from our communities to do that, and our stations remain staffed, and we have a lot of willing volunteers here at home. We were signing up for extra shifts and picking up the vacancies that are created when we send people out, so that's one thing that's pretty, pretty awesome about the organization, so. Those will be ongoing. We anticipate those to continue on through September, and then hopefully once October arrives and the, the weather starts to change, the fire behavior starts to decrease, so.
Riley, it just, it's very enlightening to see this. It's, I think, when people know they have a problem, you're going to be there, and they really do appreciate that.
Thank you, and we're open to feedback, too. We're not afraid of the numbers, and if they don't look favorable, we want to find ways to make those better and find ways that we can improve that, so, but, you know, we're happy to serve the community, and we appreciate all that feedback, so.
All right, thank you, Riley. I, I think it's interesting in the update we've had in UFA board this morning is that the fires that they're fighting in Oregon and in California are not like typical fires that they've ever seen, especially in Oregon because of the winds and things, which very complex. I didn't, I really had my eyes opened this morning of how unique they are, of how they can take a one-mile path fifteen miles long, and one side of the street have no, nothing burned, and then a one-mile path down the middle burned, so. It's amazing, and what our, our firefighters have to deal with in recovery and in support, so. We appreciate their services, and, you know, with Chris Cage, I think it's interesting, not just interesting, but it's, it's something that is worth mentioning that he's considered, his death is considered in, in the line of duty because of his efforts with nine eleven years ago. Even though he had thirty-one years, it's a result of those efforts in supporting which tells you the type of character he was, and I talked to him right after that, participating, volunteering, and working as well in nine eleven, so. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further comments? All right. We have a few action items. I'd like to go through those now if we can, if you look at your agendas. The first item is Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-two. It's approving entry into the Second Amendment to an independent contract agreement with Greg Curtis, Curtis Consulting. Any questions or discussion regarding that resolution?
I just want to make a family relationship clear, so I don't know if it's appropriate for me to abstain.
You're, you're welcome to do that, yeah. Okay. I, hearing no further comments, I would entertain a motion for approval.
Move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-two.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bracken. Do I have a second?
I can.
A second, Matt.
Sorry, Christine, I heard her whisper.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Christie.
Seconded by Council. Seconded by Councilmember Michael. Any further discussion? You know, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Abstaining?
Yep. Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Next resolution, and similar in nature, is Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-three. It's approving entry into the Second Amendment to an independent contract agreement with Aviva Consulting, DBA Capitol Hill Advisors. Any questions about that resolution? Now, we talked about them last week, but, or two weeks ago. Hearing that, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-three.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bracken. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Next item is Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-four, accepting bid and approving entry into a consulting for construction contract, not consulting, with PEX striping for the twenty twenty citywide striping project. Matt, you want to introduce that quickly?
Yeah, like I mentioned earlier this evening, this is the annual contract for striping the city for all the, the main lines in the city and the roads. Went out to public bid, and they're the low bid on this.
All right, thank you, Matt. That's for a hundred and five thousand dollars for everyone's information. Any further discussion?
Love it when the lines are on the road and you can see them.
Especially at nighttime, yeah. All right, entertain a motion for approval.
I will, if nobody else will. Move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-four.
It's moved by Councilmember Bracken. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Next item is Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-five, approving entry into a grant agreement with Utah Department of Heritage and Arts for funding year twenty twenty dash twenty-one. It's for forty-five hundred dollars. Tim, you want to introduce that quickly?
Yeah, as, as was mentioned in the work session, it's the second year of a two-year grant. It's for a variety of things, arts education and, and art activities within the city. It's a grant that we apply for regularly, and we're excited to receive that and have some funds to continue to promote art and, and those types of things in our community. Recommending approval.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? Hearing that, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-five.
It's been moved by Councilmember Peterson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Bruce. Any further comments, questions?
I'm grateful for the Arts Council. Real quick, Mayor, they are working under difficult COVID conditions, but they are, they are actively pursuing any, anything and everything they can under these circumstances, so. They look forward to, to moving into a, a normal situation like we all are.
Well, we applaud their efforts, and I think all of our committees would agree that they'd love to get back to more normal situation. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further comments?
I miss the displays at City Hall.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, those have always been great.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The next item is Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-six, approving entry into interlocal cooperation with Soli County concerning its CDBG block grant program and other federal program funding. Mike Johnson, you want to, take just a minute, introduce that again?
Yeah, this is an agreement. The county is required to update between the county and all the municipalities within it. It's required by the Department of Housing and Urban Development federally, and it will allow the county to continue to administer various federal grant programs within its boundaries.
All right, thank you, Mike, and I know we talked about that briefly in our work session. Any last comments, questions? Hearing that, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
I move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-six.
It's been moved by Councilmember Michael. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any further comments, questions? Hearing that, I call for the vote. Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Almost done. The next one is Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-seven, approving approving disposal of unclaimed property and former evidence through a process that we've moved previously. And it was in your packet. Chief Russo, do you want to introduce that quickly?
Sure, and thank you. This is property currently in our evidence room that is no longer needed for court or for entry purposes. It is not contraband, but it still has value. We are seeking to send that property to the auction house for sale, with the proceeds being returned to the city.
All right, thank you, Chief. Any questions, comments?
Just for clarification, this is typically evidence that, for whatever reason, we can't get back to the original owner. Is that correct?
You're correct. We make a list of it. We post it in in public places, and then we dispose it, but it contains various items, tools, et cetera. We sent it to an Eskelson-Nolson auction house. I believe they take about ten percent of the proceeds and then return the rest to the city general fund.
Chief, where is that posted at?
I think Paula can better answer that than I do. She's in charge of the posting.
It's posted on local newspapers. We run it for two major weekends. We post it on our website. We post it on our front lobby. It's, it's just.
Mayor, I don't know if you're aware, I had a constituent here in District Three who was told that a family heirloom gun had been destroyed, and upon an audit through the state auditor's office, it was discovered the gun wasn't destroyed, luckily, and we were able to get it back to that constituent. But it worries me when we're auctioning off items and we may or may not have made every attempt to give them back to the rightful owner. Is there a safeguard for people so they don't lose precious heirlooms?
We make every effort possible to return the property to the owners. The case you're talking about is, has nothing to do with what we're talking about today. It was a very different kind of case and was resolved in a very different method, so.
Well, we can ask, we can ask Tim to take a look at that and see if there's any.
There was, yeah, real quick, there's something Tim could address in that. I know Dan Bartlett was the one that told this woman the gun had been destroyed, and then when the auditors quizzed him, he said, "We told her that to get her off our back," and so I just wondered if Tim has addressed that lying, if we have a penalty.
Mayor, this, this is not.
All my guys liars.
This is not, this is not the issue that we are addressing tonight.
Right.
The auditor, we, we had a clean audit, and, and information was provided by the auditor that, that said that everything met their requirements, and that's all I'm going to say about that.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well. It was a clean audit, and this is something after the fact, and I know Tim has been in communication with the state auditor, so, all right.
Did we address lying? We don't?
We're not discussing that. I move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-seven.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bracken. Do we have a second?
I second that.
It's been seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Okay, any further comments regarding this issue, not, not auxiliary issues? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Bruce.
Yeah.
Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's our. Action items and resolutions, other than the consent calendar, which is for the meeting minutes for August 18th, 2020. I think that was sent out recently and there was no changes from original draft, other than some dates. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I move we approve the consent calendar.
It's been moved by Councilor Bruce. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Councilor Bracken. I'll call for the vote to Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilor Michael.
Yes.
Councilor Bruce.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, so those minutes are approved. It's now about 9:20. I appreciate everybody's patience during a challenging, difficult night and hopefully we can absorb the information that we've gathered and. Use it to be proactive and make the right decisions going forward. The challenge will be is determining what those right decisions are. With that being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Next meeting is October 6th. And we're still working on a date for the special. Meeting that Tim will be communicating with everybody on.
Mayor, may I just make a comment real quick?
Please.
I want to just tell you all that this community, Cottonwood Heights is a great community. I'm glad I'm here. I'm glad I'm working with each of you. I'm glad that I have the staff that I get to work with every day. I want to express appreciation to them from. The Records, Culture and Human Resources Department to Public Works, to Finance and Administration, to Community Economic Development Police. I was driving during the windstorm in this community. And was comforted when I saw officers and public work staff out doing the things that they were doing. I just want to tell you, this is a great community and I'm glad that I'm here and I'm grateful for the staff and the work that they do.
Thanks.
I'm glad you're here too, Tim.
Hey, Tim, can I just tell you that staff has improved since you've been here? We really see the noticeable increase in the quality of our staff members and their cohesiveness, so kudos to you.
All right, thank you, everyone. Any final comments? Hearing none. I'm going to call this meeting adjourned. Be safe. Thank you.
Did we get a motion and a second?
Well. Red Scott motion for me.
I move that we adjourn.
It's moved by Scott. Do you have a second?
Second.
The second, all in favor, say aye.
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 See you next Tuesday.
Bye, everybody.